Um. What's that? Gavel?
Yeah.
Okay, should use it?
Sure.
I'm calling um to order the council meeting for January eighth twenty twenty Monday, January tw- January eighth twenty twenty four. Doing a roll call. We have councillor Laraway, councillor Marks, councillor Berthasell, councillor Demerit and councillor Powers. And councillor Kenny. Um absent is councillor Wingard. So I mean, I'm running this, running the meeting tonight. You guys are in for a treat. Um agenda review. I don't know if there's anything anyone has.
I had one. Um. So under, we haven't called a, um, we don't have anything scheduled for workshops or anything like that regarding the search committee. And I know we don't meet again until for two weeks from tonight, the twenty second. So I'm not necessarily asking for an item to be added to our agenda this evening, like an order. But I wanted to ask uh if it made sense, if if in our discussion, we decide we need workshops. If we can just agree to do that, or should I move that we put an order on the agenda now calling for workshops?
I, the, I think the plan was there, there is a um. The, the last item, which I am gonna, I, I'll do it. It says, uh, Chair's report. And that was gonna be discussion of the search process and the SGR schedule. I was under the impression we would be able to add a subcommittee meeting, which I was also going to insist that we need to do there. So assuming we can do that there, but thank you for bringing that up. I don't, procedurally wise, I'm surely not the one to ask. All agree. All right.
So we, we would just, yeah. Yeah, that was, yeah, yeah. So that was my understanding and it would be if, if we can agree that to it, I would ask for that unanimously now. But if we can just agree that we'll agree to coming up with something towards the end of our discussion, if we, if it's a sense of the council, we need a committee meeting. That's how I like to, that's perfectly fine for me.
So long as we can do it either way. I mean, we could do it either way. I think we probably will all agree that we need to have that. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for, for bringing that up. Um, I do wanna read a, a special, a special acknowledgement uh to Judy Sullivan. And uh Judy was also, was, was a town council. It's in here. So on behalf of the community, uh, the Orno Town Council acknowledges the passing of longtime resident Judith E. Sullivan on December eighth, twenty twenty three. Uh, Ms. Sullivan served as a town councillor, March two thousand nine to March two thousand eighteen. And as an election warden, election warden, uh, her many contributions to the Orno's community, uh, her many contribution to Orno's community were great. And she will surely be missed. Our sincerest condolences are expressed to her family and loved ones. Um. So Judy was a, a, a great councillor, I think, and uh really that's, she, n- nine years is not insignificant. So um. Appreciate that and sorry for, for her, for her family's loss. Um. Next item, approval of the minutes from October thirtieth, twenty twenty three, November sixth, twenty twenty three. November twenty seventh, twenty twenty three, November thirtieth, twenty twenty three, December eleventh, twenty twenty three, and December nineteenth, twenty twenty three. I'll take a motion to approve, correct? Think we get.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Second and discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the minutes from the December nineteenth meeting. Um, just to be sure we're accurately reflecting what members of the public um expressed, and I think Matt has some language perhaps.
So um in regards to this, we just wanna make sure that everything is clear as opposed to this complex um. Um items that we have been looking at. And so we would like to amend the second sentence of the minutes to read. Darren Ranko, one of the original consultants weighed in stating that while he is not generally big on public statements of apology, in this case, he felt that one was needed and that in such a statement letter, he would prefer that specific action, steps and goals are committed to in order to build trust. And so that people's time is not wasted. We'd also like to amend um the third sentence, which um just by adding to the end of it. So it would now read Malcolm Himshu, D E I B committee member, requested that the council read the recommendations from the D E I B. And Jeff Wingard read these D E I B recommendations into the record. And finally, we'd like to um take out the end of that third um sentence, making a new sentence that starts with. Jose Alicia Santiago referred to the, to council resolution order twenty one dash one oh four and said that it was imperative to offer a formal apology to continue good relationships between the Orno and Penobscot Nation governments.
So would I move to uh say that we should adopt those amendments? I, I will move that.
I would second adoption of those amendments.
I assume that's the accurate process. Um. Okay. Um, just double checking, Jeff is not online, correct? If not, we don't have to do roll call, obviously.
Not online right now, Leo.
Not online. Thank you. Um, so I, this is the vote on the amendment. All those in favor? Unanimous. Vote on approval of the minutes as amended. All those in favor? Unanimous. That. Uh, next item is public comments. Uh, anyone that would like to speak either online or in the chambers is welcome to um approach the mic or raise a hand online.
There is a hand raised online.
All right, could you put that person through?
Hello?
Hello, Marguerite.
Yes, yes, I uh first time on Zoom, so voila.
Well, welcome.
Yes, well.
Joining us.
Yes, wish me luck. Um, I'm following up on the letter that I sent to you all um about the speed of the trains in town. And um I, I heard back from several of you and I appreciate that. And I followed up with a link to a rather um informative Portland Press Herald um investigation. So I just wanted to bring it up here at the meeting. Um. I know that, um, let's see, I mentioned it to Sarah, I think it was, in another uh note saying that um somebody on Facebook for the uh Milford uh Facebook uh town page said something too about the um, about the uh speed of the trains on, and I'm sure that's, you know. I'm sure lots of folks are concerned. At any rate, I just wanted to bring that up and, and um have it part of the, the, the meetings here tonight.
Thank you, Marguerite. And could you state your last name? I'm sorry, it's cut off on the screen.
Rosen, R O O S E N.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate uh your comment. Appreciate your um emails to us. Um, I guess I would, we don't normally act on public comment, I don't think, but um.
I just wanted to put it out there, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm talking uh just to council at this point. I apologize for not being clear. Um. But um I do. I, my assumption is that is beyond the purview of a town council with regards to rail. I don't know if we've had any um communication with where um Anna M, maybe? I'm not even sure who, who owns it. Or what, do you, do you have any idea what our potential options are?
Has this been an issue since I started?
Yes, I think they've recently done some upgrades um to the tracks to allow them to speed up the trains. Uh, I, I had heard that kind of offline somewhere. So, yeah, this was a email that came in. Maybe you, you may not have seen it actually. I don't know.
Is it allowed for Rob to ask something? I see you nodding, Rob. Is there something you know?
Ownership of the railway that passes through town has changed. They're investing millions in infrastructure to increase the quality of the rail system. Uh, they've replaced all the crossings through town, really from, all the way from Lincoln, all the way through to Bangor, um with the goal to uh, I believe, increase speed limits. How that process works, I don't know. It's a federal process that the town would have very little control over. Um. The uh, you know, as far as safety of the railway corridor and those kinds of things, if there are specific issues that come up, I'm sure we could work with our public safety department to address those, but um ultimately the town's gonna have very little control and uh say in what those speed limits are, because they are, I'm sure, um set by some national standards. So. Um, but that is something that we could look into, I guess.
Thank you, Rob. Uh, is there any additional public comments?
No, no. If it's okay, if we're still, are we still okay to comment to Marguerite? If that's okay, if, if unless anyone objects, I'll be willing to dig into it with the federal administration that manages these things and come back to us with a little bit of an update. Just so we know who and where and what the, what the points are. Obviously, we can't pass a resolution to slow the trains down. You know, maybe some, some raised sidewalks, but I don't think we can install those along the tra- train tracks, but um I'd be happy to dig into it and find out just what's going on.
I appreciate that. I wonder if that is an appropriate role or if that is something staff might be more appropriate. If, if we decide that that should happen, uh, should that be a staff role versus a town council?
Yeah, I'm happy to do it either way. If, if staff wants to volunteer to do it, if it's not within the, the realm of what staff would do as a councillor and a citizen, I'm happy to as experienced in the, you know, federal congressional delegation and elsewhere, I'm happy to dig into it.
I'd gladly look into it if somebody would just send me the email about the issue and um we'll, we'll look into it, get back to you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any additional public comments? Hearing none, we will close the uh public comment section. Um, item six, public hearings. Someone might need to refresh me on um what, how, how we go about this. There we go.
Uh, Patrick Guesty, code enforcement officer. Um, and the typical procedure is that you read down through and I let you know if I approve, if staff approves or disapproves the recommendation.
Okay, so um we will just start with the first one to con- consider renewals of vitulars license for the following businesses. Do I read down through them all?
Yep.
Global Mont- Montello Group, DBA Alltown, one oh three Park Street. DMCP LLC, DBA Dunkin' Donuts. Stop there or keep going. DMCP Group LLC for Stillwater Ave, DBA Dunkin' Donuts. Nest Coffee LLC, DBA The Nest, twenty four Main Street. Lynn's Takeout Kitchen LLC, one fifty six Park Street. Legacy CP Main LLC, DBA Wendy's Old Fashioned Hamburgers for Stillwater Ave.
And uh staff recommends uh approval and that's code, police, fire and town clerk.
Awesome. Thank you. Item B. Is there any discussion or information? From the council? Thanks, Shelley. Should we close item A? Any discussion? Any thoughts? Closing item A. So we're not voting on, on that? Okay, all right. Item B, consider initial application for a new vitulars license for hotel. U R S A Cafe One, I mean Cafe One Moosehead Road, U Main Campus.
And this is uh the new hotel project at the university. Uh, the old uh Holmes Hall got remodeled. Um, and there's a little cafe in there and we do have Heather, that is the manager uh here tonight. Um, but uh staff has received all the paperwork, inspections are done and we're asking for approval.
Is there any discussion or comments? Can I just ask when, is there a date on that?
Say that again.
There a date?
So uh right now they have a temporary C of O so that uh workers can go in there and set everything up. I believe um in a month from now. Say that again.
They do date to open as March fifth and then a month from now.
Okay, so March fifth, did you say?
March fifth.
Yep, March fifth.
Fifth, cool.
Yep.
Will that be open to the public or just hotel guests? Great.
Welcome to Orno.
Closing item B, onto item C. Consider the renewal of a class one malt liquor, wine and spirits liquor license and vitulars license for Farnsworth Enterprise Incorporated. DBA Pat's Pizza, eleven Mill Street.
And uh inspections are completed and paperwork is in and staff is recommending approval.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we will close item C. Item D, to consider a renewal of a class six malt liquor, malt liquor, wine and spirits liquor license. Special amusement permit for music, dancing and entertainment and vitulars license for Yamas Inc. DBA Yamas Bar and Grill, nineteen Mill Street.
And staff is recommending approval on this as well.
Any comments? None, we'll close item D. Item E, to consider renewal of a class one malt liquor, wine and spirits liquor license. Special amusement permit for music, dancing and entertainment and vitulars license for the University of Maine DBA Collins Center for the Arts. Fifty seven forty six Collins Center.
And staff is recommending approval for this as well.
Any comments? Guys are making it easy, thanks. No comments, we'll close item E. F, to consider a marijuana establishment, tier one cultivation, renewal license for Dustin Seer. DBA Irie Farmer LLC, nine Godfrey Drive.
Inspections are completed, paperwork is in and staff is recommending approval.
Any comments? Hearing none, closing item F to item G. To consider ordinance amendments to the town of Orno ordinances, chapter thirty two, streets and sidewalks. Street opening permit, division three, to align with the current practices.
Uh, good evening, Rob Yerx, Public Works Department Director. Um, so our current practice, um, when somebody gets a road opening permit is the town, um, the ordinance calls for the town to collect the deposit. Um, so when a resident or contractor wants to um cut into the road, into the right of way for drainage, utility, whatever the work might be. Um, they're required to get a uh road opening permit. Um, that comes with a processing fee, but also the town holds um a fifty dollar, a five hundred dollar deposit um from the permit holder um for up to two, for two years. Um, the intent of the deposit at the time that the ordinance was written was to hold people accountable for the repairs, to make sure that they were done properly. And to help the town um pay for repairs if they became necessary, if the permit holder defaulted on the, on the intent of the permit. In today's world, five hundred dollars to fix a street repair doesn't go very far. Um, and a lot of times resident, this would be, this is a bit of a hardship for residents to come up with. Um, usually when something like this, especially in emergency situations like a sewer problem or water problem comes along, they're unexpected, they can't be planned for. Um, and so sometimes this can be a bit of a hardship for residents to have to come up with five hundred dollars that they're gonna get back into, five hundred dollars and they're gonna, that they're gonna get back in two years anyway. So the um, the other part of that is the town has to track that for two years. So um, Public Works and, and um code enforcement um spend a bunch of time following up on um, you know, in two years we'll do an inspection, uh then release the funds and code enforcement does a pretty good job of keeping track of all that, but um again, something that uh is a little bit of a hardship for the town administratively as well. The uh revision of the ordinance would um eliminate the deposit process and simply put the onus on the permit holder to do the repairs um based on an inspection by Public Works Director or the designee of the Public Works Director. Residents are responsible for repair of damage to public infrastructure anyway. So um the requirement to keep the money to, to keep them honest, I suppose, really doesn't have a lot of teeth and a lot of necessity, I guess. Um, so we're recommending that we simply um put some language on the uh permit that reminds permit holders that they're responsible for that um repair and in a reasonable amount of time. I'll follow up on it and once complete, um, we'll still hold the warranty for that period. So if there's faulty workmanship or whatever it might be, we can follow up on that. Um, but it takes away the, the responsibility of the permit holder to provide the five hundred dollar deposit. The town won't have to track it anymore and um the results are the same. So um obviously we're recommending revisions. You were provided with a copy of the revisions. Um, if you had any questions or comments on that, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Rob. Anybody have any comments, thoughts? I, I will say I appreciate the kind of common sense approach and making us as a town, I think, just kind of easier to do business with, I think, is always a good thing. So appreciate, appreciate the approach on this, Rob.
Yeah, I'll second what Leo just said. Thank you.
And also appreciated that description, the last meeting too, it really thoroughly explained and made perfect sense and really thank you and your staff for doing it.
Any, that's it, no other comments on item G.
What does it mean when we, on a, just maybe this is for the, the clerk or the town manager? Sorry, I didn't raise my, I didn't get recognized, but um. Thank you.
We're familiar.
Thank you, acting chair. Um, what does it mean when we say to align with current practices? Is that practices like writ large in, in the world? Or is it because we're already doing it anyway? Now we're coming back to council and we're asking, we're asking to change the ordinance. Do you know what I mean? Cause I saw it in the minutes somewhere else too.
Just, it's not accurate.
What's that?
What's that? It's not accurate. We're not, we're, we're making a change to move away from current practices.
Okay.
There's a typo there.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to call anybody out. I don't, I don't care if it's a typo. I just want to, thank you.
Closing item G. To item H, to consider amendment to the town of Orno fee schedule for the solid waste collections.
Yeah, so um we discussed this a little bit in committee, so um anytime we need to amend the fee schedule, we need to come to the town council to, to set those fees. Our transition to the automated side load process has brought some new fees in that weren't contemplated at the time we did the budget. So we're proposing um that we add these fees to the fee schedule associated with the automated side load collection. Um, the first one is an additional collection container. So all residents get a ninety six gallon trash container and a ninety six gallon recycling container free of charge. Um, but if a resident wants an additional cart, um because they're generating more than will, that will hold. They can opt to have one um at a fee. Uh, it's basically, it's five dollars a week. Um, that's the fee that the, that Casella charges us. So we're simply just passing that on to the resident. Um, that's five dollars per week billed quarterly for each container that they request. The other one is uh swapping containers. So um we offer a smaller sized container, a forty eight gallon container as opposed to the ninety six gallon container. The first swap, so if somebody doesn't, the, the, everyone was initially um issued ninety six gallon carts. Um, they can request to have smaller carts provided. Um, the first time we do that swap, it's free of charge. We don't charge a fee for that. Um, but if additional changes want to be made, we would charge a fee for the cost to swap those out. Um, so uh the goal here would be to prevent somebody from swapping carts once, once a month or whatever it might be. But also to cover costs for maintaining inventory for carts and the actual physical process of going out and swapping them. The recommended fee for that is thirty five dollars per cart after the initial deployment. So um this would also apply for new residents. So if somebody were to move into town, um and the house that they move into had forty eight gallon carts, but they want the ninety sixes, as a new resident, they'd be allowed that first swap. Uh, we wouldn't charge them a fee for that. Um, so um, yeah, that's uh swapping thirty five dollars per cart um per request. And then replacement carts, it sets the fee if a cart is lost or damaged or stolen, um, the resident uh to get a replacement cart, the cost is a hundred and fifty dollars per cart. Uh, this does not cover wear and tear damage, those kinds of things, like the wheel comes off, it's a defective cart, those kinds of things will be covered. These would be in the case where somebody moves out of town and kicks their carts with them or whatever it might be. It's hard to, but also allows um landlords to set a fee for that as well so that they can charge the residents. And that's the uh three fees.
Thank you, Rob. Any comments, discussion?
Just it all makes sense. Thank you.
Is the replacement fee the same, whether it's the larger cart or the smaller cart?
Yeah, same is, same fee.
Um, no further comment. We're closing item H. And we are on to acknowledgements, acknowledgements by council members. Start down here.
Hi, um, Matthew Powers. I'd like to acknowledge both um the police department, the fire department and the um, the public's work department with all of their work when we had that storm, being out there, trying to clean up and also trying to keep um us citizens safe. So I would just want to say thank you all for that. That was uh an unprecedented storm. Well, not really, but it's a, a big storm and thank you for keeping us safe.
I would like to thank um the, the clerk for the excellent job getting us caught up on the minutes. I thought they were phenomenal. Um, really well detailed and it's very helpful to have like the minutes and the, the minutes of the meeting for the, the video links and things like that. So I wanted to thank Shelley and, and the team for that.
Rob?
Well, I mean, I'm sure we all sort of agree with what Matt had brought up, acknowledging public works. Well, I mean, I'm sure we all sort of agree with what Matt had brought up, acknowledging public works and all public safety personnel for all the work they did during the storm and in, you know, even just cleanup during the snowstorm yesterday. So that's sort of the first thing came to mind for me. So Matt kind of stole mine, but also just thanks to the clerks, there at the town office for all the work that they're going to be doing leading up to the next election.
Sorry, I just wanted to add on to that. I, a big thank you to all the departments who are already thanked, but I'm also aware that the library was involved with warming stations. And I know that Shelley's office was answering all kinds of phone calls from people trying to figure out how services were provided. So I guess I just want to broaden that to the whole staff. Cornell could tell us, but I'm pretty convinced that it was every single staff member that was involved in that emergency response and huge thank you there. I also just want to, a thank you to the Orono community. I, I've had a rough day, so I may tear up. It's not about this. But I just want to say that I am so honored and like grateful to live in Orono. The kindness of this town is just amazing to me. And every time we have an event like that, I feel like those things shine forth again in new ways. And for me, I mean, there were so many things happening with people posting and saying who in the neighborhood needs help, who needs something, who doesn't have a generator, who needs a hot shower. I know Willis Beasley was asking who had generators that could be moved to someone else's house. Once half the power was on and half the power was out in town. And it's just one example of the incredible kindness that I saw happening all around town. So I just want to appreciate that. And I also want to appreciate the Frey and Greenlaw family for hosting the potluck yesterday. That was a really wonderful and amazing event and to Jason Brown, who also came from the Penobscot Nation. I know a lot of folks were there and other people may have things to say, but I really wanted to thank the Frey and Greenlaw family for their work to put that together and to bring that to all of us. Thank you.
I think mine was related to yesterday's potluck too. And thanks for everyone who came out despite the snowstorm. It was a really beautiful thing.
And all of those, I think, were, I would agree with. I did want to single out maybe a little further the fire department. And I don't have all the stats, but I, I think there have been two house fires in, in the last month or so. And just kind of hearing some of the stories that bring it home a little bit, the fact that these are the people that run into burning buildings. It's, it's pretty amazing and I want to acknowledge that. Acknowledge their work and what, what they do for a living is, is pretty amazing. So I just want some extra acknowledgement towards that. I, I mean, hopefully, I, two, I, I don't know the stats again, but it seems like two house fires within a month is probably a pretty high mark and hopefully it's a higher mark than we see ever. But just hearing, hearing stories was, was kind of chilling almost. So I appreciate the work they do. Onto unfinished business. We are order twenty-four oh one, which is an order taking order twenty-three two forty-two off the table.
So moved.
Second.
Mitch, you going to speak with us?
I think you take it off the table and then the next order is dealing with it.
Sorry. New with this. It's not showing. Okay, in the next.
Move for approval?
Oh, sorry. Uh, move for approval. Uh, all those in.
Sorry, I'm unclear as to what moving it off the table means for what we're doing here. Cause I, I was under the impression.
It was tabled previously, right?
I see off the ta, I see what you mean.
I, I thought the same thing, to be very candid.
Understood.
Wait, what does that mean? So, okay, so we have an order. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Get my wits about me.
Did we have a second?
Oh, did we have a second?
Oh, sorry.
Any discussion?
I'm going to have an amendment and I'd like to offer it now if that's an appropriate time or if we want to have Mitch go first and walk us through that.
Order approved, that isn't, that's probably better time for the next, the next one.
I'm sorry.
I think then we have an order approving an ordinance. So I think that would be the time for your amendment.
Okay.
The next, the next order.
All right, thank.
I believe. Any further discussion on twenty-four oh one, order taking order twenty-three two four two off the table? You with us? Everyone with us? Yeah, all right. All those in favor? unanimous. Next order, twenty-three two four two, order approving an ordinance amendment to the Town of Orono ordinances. Chapter two, article five, finance, division two, purchasing to update to current practice standards.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so Mitch Stone, Director of Community Economic Development. We discussed this at the last meeting and have discussed it several times. I'm not going to go through everything that is in there. Basically, the purchasing ordinance talks about the process for purchasing. We will be talking about later, the internal controls manual, which is connected to that. That gives authority for purchasing. So if there are questions in here, I'll do my best to answer them. But I also know there's some other conversation around it that I probably won't have any conversation about.
Okay, Mitch, so help me out, because I, I may be off. But so you're saying first we're looking at the internal control policy and procedures or first the ordinance?
The, the ordinance first.
Okay. And the other one will come later, because my questions are about the other one. Thank you.
The other one comes.
I'd like to offer an amendment to the ordinance before us, if that's okay.
It, not, not this, it's not in here, correct?
It's not, it's not in the red line version of the, shoot, I'm looking at the street opening permit. It's not in the ordinance, division two ordinance revision that's in front of us, division two purchasing. So I, it's in the agenda materials and I wanted to thank a town manager for his help in, in getting review by the town attorney and also making this amend, this memo available as part of today's agenda materials. But my proposed amendment, you know, Shelley, do you need me to read it to you? Because it's in the, I'm happy to read it. I have one minor change, just a wording change. Okay. I'm proposing, Leo, are you ready for me now?
I'm ready for you.
I am proposing we add the following to section two dash one two six of the draft ordinance revision. Section D, potential liability from claims of harassment or discrimination. The town council, section, subsection one, the town council must approve by a public vote any legal settlement involving a complaint of discrimination or harassment brought against the Town of Orono, its employees or municipal officers. Subsection two, the town manager must notify the full council within seventy-two hours of receiving a written complaint alleging or initiating, that's where I have a minor word change, or initiating a formal investigation of an allegation of an incident of discrimination or harassment by the Town of Orono, its employees or municipal officers. And subsection three, the chair of the council, on behalf of and in consultation with the full council and the town attorney, will oversee any investigation resulting from an allegation of discrimination or harassment brought against the town manager. I was, that's the end of the amendment. And I guess if you want me to speak to it, is now an appropriate time, Leo, to speak to it?
Please.
I'm sure others will. I do think for the record, someone should read into the record Chair Wingard's email that he sent to us on his views, because it's, he shared his views in an email and I think it should be part of the public record. I'm happy to, at the right time, but I do, would appreciate someone reading that for him, for Jeff.
I'm happy to read out Jeff's email. I actually didn't see it before the meeting, so it's, it'll be good for me to read it. Chair Wingard writes, hi councillors, I'm dealing with a, is this the one that says out tonight? Okay, I'm going to skip the first paragraph that's not pertinent to the issue. But he says, I had hoped to be present to vote on language related to council oversight of personnel claims. If I'm not able to join you to vote, I'll just share that I think we have clear guidance from our attorney that handling the issue outside of internal controls manual raises a host of unintended consequences that will limit the town's ability to negotiate settlements and may significantly impact our bottom line if a future councillor or if a future council, excuse me, were to reject a settlement here thereby, abrogating insurance coverage or another financial firewall. Furthermore, the town council is not an investigative body in personnel matters and we are not equipped to judge the veracity of competing claims against the town or town employees. We open ourselves up to institutional and personal liability taking this step. I'm sure you'll have a robust discussion. Sorry, I likely won't be able to join you, sort of et cetera, regrets.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I appreciate hearing from Chair Wingard on this. I'm bringing this forward because I was, I was surprised to learn during our process that a claims of harassment or discrimination that, that could be entered into by the Town of Orono without a, a, you know, a legal arrangement, without the consent of the municipal officer of the town, which that's the council. So after, you know, several questions and, and I first started raising this issue over the summer. I think ultimately the power vested is, for these kinds of things should be vested with the town council. We should be the final word on something where I think we should set a higher standard and be the final word when there's a, a claim against the town, its employees or us as the municipal officers alleging harassment, discrimination. I appreciate the, the advice from our attorney. And, and you know, my take on that is legal advice should inform our discussion, but not necessarily end them. And I, I'm sure, I know it's much more expedited to manage these things in a way where they can be done, personnel matters can be negotiated and, and never necessarily see the light of day. And I'm not advocating that we, in public meeting, talk about employees or talk about allegations against the town in, in any kind of way. I'm talking about being informed as appropriate in our executive session process where we are, you know, where we have an opportunity to be informed of those sensitive matters. And then if it comes to the point where a settlement is going to be reached, that it comes to the council for a final vote, guaranteeing that the municipal officers of the community have that opportunity. I would say, you know, I, I guess I would liken it to the process we had with, we just reached a, we just reached a new contract with our police bargaining unit. And for those of us that was, we were approached about that, it was brought to us in an executive session where the town manager advised us on what was, you know, what the opportunity was there. And the feedback conversation and then, you know, the town manager was charged with, go lock this contract in. And then it came back to us and then we voted on it. And I think that, I would, I would like the same kind of process whenever we hear about there's someone is charged our community with wrongdoing in case of discrimination, harassment, where the council is advised of what's going on, consented with, and ultimately at the end of the day, has the final word on whether or not the town should enter into the legal agreement or not, regardless of the sum. So whether it's five thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, or a hundred thousand dollars, that's, that's my take on it. I appreciate the chance to have this conversation and Cornell, I thank you for getting the, the attorney to weigh in on it. And I, I welcome other people's opinions. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I would just say that I agree with some aspects of what Chair Wingard emailed to us. One, in that we are not an investigative body in personnel matters and we're not equipped to judge the veracity of these claims. I think it is important to keep in mind, I do think that taking this step would not necessarily mean that we're claiming that we are those things. And so I think that I, I appreciate where you're coming from, councillor Demerit, in bringing this to us. And I am, you know, leaning in favor of supporting this. Although I, I do think it's worth us also discussing to some extent, sort of what some of the advice was of our lawyer as far as whether or not this should go in the quote of ordinances, under purchasing, which, you know, I, I admit is, I mean, with the heading that you've added, I think it, it does make sense in some level. And, and it is, just to be clear to all, sort of witnessing, we are, this is a perfectly legal thing for us to do in, in either case. So we have been advised that way. But I'm wondering also about what he brought up about perhaps the better place would be in the internal controls manual. And again, I'm not saying I necessarily agree one way or the other, but I think it's worth raising that that was his advice.
If I could too, in appreciation to, to Cornell, we did get, our attorney did respond back to a follow-up question after he offered his opinion that this option is, the option that I'd laid out is not illegal and can be done if the council so decides. So I, I wanted to make sure that was part of the, thank you for bringing that up and it's an important part of the conversation.
Anybody else with comments?
I think.
Go ahead, you go first.
My comments strongly echo Rob Lara ways, so I'll just say that and pass it to Matt.
I think it's, as, as a oversight body, one of the things that we are tasked with and we are the only recourse, especially when it comes to town management, we are the body that oversees that. We have to take that responsibility seriously. And I feel personally that when it comes to situations where the town manager is in a, a situation of jeopardy, if we are not in a, in that oversight role, if we are cut out of that loop, then we're basically a non-entity, even though our charter and we are the only, we are the only voted group here to oversee that particular position. And so I am strongly in favor of this because I feel that we need to be at least abreast of it in, in, in the same way that, that councillor Demerit was saying in an advisory role. Not necessarily, we are not there to make investigative situations, but we do have to understand what, what and where and when the town manager is in a situation where that is, is jeopardizing to themselves or to this town. And so I'm strongly in favor of this. Where it should go, that is another, that's another discussion.
Sarah, did you have comments or?
I think most of my comments have already been made. I did want to ask, it's my impression in, in the concerns about how it might hamper us in negotiations. My understanding is that this is already a situation we would be in anyway if a settlement was of a certain size financially. So this is not creating an unprecedented kind of situation. It's simply saying that we would need to have this approval of a settlement, all settlements, as opposed to just very, very large financial ones. Is that correct, Dan and Cornell? My understanding is this is already a situation we are potentially in, in some scenarios, correct?
Yeah, if we approve the internal control manuals, increase later on, it'll go from five thousand to seventy-five hundred, but that would be my understanding.
Okay. That's just important for me because it isn't an unprecedented legal situation or negotiating situation. It's a situation we already have and it would just apply more often potentially. Okay, thank you. I am, I agree with what folks have said in general in favor of this idea. And I'm not exactly sure, you know, where it needs to go, but open on that.
I did have one other, I think I wanted to raise here. I'm interested, it seems like Cornell maybe has something he wants to say. But in the proposed amendment language, I, I want to make sure, and I think reading this, it does make clear that we're not looking to get involved in sort of the, the day-to-day operations under the town manager's jurisdiction or under other management's jurisdiction. I, I, and perhaps some of these, the first two of these three items, don't make that super clear that we're not looking to sort of be constantly informed about sort of employee-to-employee relations. I think our job is primarily to manage the town manager. And the third item does say something to that effect, but I, I am interested in ma, making sure that it is crystal clear, that we are still sort of understanding sort of what is our responsibility and what is the town managers. But yeah, sorry.
No, sorry. I just would weigh in. I mean, I agree with what Jeff said and just for those listening, our attorney has advised that this should be, it was already said, I guess, but this should be addressed in the internal control of manual. He laid out many reasons why, and I guess my question is why? I, I am in favor of following his recommendation and I'm not sure why we would. I hear you, Dan, that it's a recommendation. It doesn't, it's not stopping discussions. So I think that's, that's good. But I do wonder what kind of liabilities we open ourselves up to when we have legal guidance in front of us and we basically flaunt it and choose to do our own thing. Nothing happens until something happens. And then, and then, then, then what kind of liability do we subject ourselves or the town to? I think, I think we, you could, you could say that we are getting involved in the day-to-day because I think this duty does fall under the town, the CEO, who's the town manager. And I think we are tipping into that, that realm. And, you know, there are hundreds of decisions probably made in a given week that might be personnel related or, you know, where I think there is a line of demarcation and I think we'd be crossing it when we, when we do this. And I, I just, I guess I, I would prefer to follow our legal guidance and address this in the internal controls manual, which he did provide language for as well, which we are also looking at this evening. I'm not, not in favor of putting this under the purchasing in finance.
Leo, I would agree, like to a certain extent, except when you end up in a situation where the manager is managing, like the town manager is managing something against that entity themselves. Because then they're in a position where the, where silence and it helps them, like you see what I'm saying? You are in this situation where you're managing yourself, basically. And, and I would agree with all the other positions, except for us as a council when it comes to a situation where the manager of the town is specifically, then what do you say about that?
I mean, I would say that we, at the table for this, for, you know, we're, we're talking about a recent incident here, unquietly, I guess. But, but in that, in the scenario, we have MMA there, which I think provides our insurance. I think that's why they're there at the table. We have an attorney there. And in this case, we have our CEO there. So there are, there are three people at the table to negotiate this. And they're paid to do that. We're laymen sitting here, laypeople sitting here at the Diaz. And I just don't, they are, they're, the town manager is paid to represent the town's interests. And I, I just think that's, that's their job and not, I mean, we are, we're not paid, we are a little. But I mean, that's, that's their role. And I think that's what, it needs to stay with that person. And, and they are not the only one at the table, you know, they're, it's not sitting off in a room negotiating this for themselves. So I think, I think that group that is involved, MMA, attorney, I think they're looking after the town's interest, which is the probably the most important thing in my mind.
I am interested to hear both from Cornell because I think he sort of seemed ready to say something earlier. And then also since we are discussing the internal control manual sort of alongside this, it might be good to hear more from Mitch as well. But as long as other councillors are cool with that.
Yeah.
I don't know that, we just, I don't know that we want to insist that somebody speak to us on a topic that it's not, you know, that they didn't bring to us, but at the same time.
You're, you're welcome to, I think is the sentiment, not, don't feel obligated, Cornell.
Yeah, I only brought it up because it seemed like he was motioning to.
Yeah. I do recommend that you, if you're going to have this, put it in the controls. One, you can amend it much easier than, than go into an ordinance, but it, to me, it just doesn't seem to fit in purchasing. I did have a brief conversation with the town attorney who saw this. The response you have from him is from a previous draft that councillor Demerit had, had issued. But that is when he said, you can do this. I just don't recommend. It's not illegal. He did have concerns about number two, the 72 hours. Because most of these complaints are confidential. And you really don't want to have, you know, a memo going out to the council explaining all this. It really should be a meeting, an executive session, and you get briefed. So having 72 hours to do all that is, it could be a constraint. You know, something that says, you know, in a reasonable amount of time, the council will be, will be briefed, would be reasonable. So if this were in the policy, then, you know, we could wordsmith something and come back and, and make an easy amendment as opposed to if it's in the ordinance, then we're going to propose it, we're going to have a notice in the paper, we're going to have a public hearing. It's just an easier process. So, and then to get clarification on the I don't know if it's an issue, but doing investigations and who's overseeing, I'd want to spend a little time with the town attorney getting the wording, wording right. Oh, and one other thing, and putting it in the policy kind of coincides with the school because they have it in a, in a policy as well.
I'm sorry, what was that point about the, in the? I didn't hear, I didn't hear it or understand the point.
You referred to the, the school has a, a policy similar to this for the superintendent. And so it's a policy. So I was just comparing that if we had the same thing, it would be in a policy as opposed to an ordinance. That's all.
Is the internal control manual a public document to the extent that we publish it anywhere for anyone to see?
I don't know if we have it online. Could be, yeah, but we don't. Yeah.
All right. It hasn't been. We don't think it's been, but okay.
What, is that, is that, I'm curious what, why that would be important for public to know that versus us as a council and as a, as a
I just think that's what leadership looks like. I think you say, we're a community that's about belonging and togetherness. We're a community that has high standards when it comes to harassment, discrimination. And as such, we're going to take a higher, I'll take a harder step, set a, you know, a higher bar to clear when it comes to settling issues of complaints around harassment, discrimination. So says the council of the town of Orno in our ordinances for all to see, all the, all to understand and all to comment on. As opposed to an internal control manual, I'm a member of the town council. And I spent, I started asking for this kind of change in June, and we're just now getting to it in January. I'm happy to be a part of conversations about where it best fits. I want to lead from our ordinances as opposed to from an internal controls manual that no one's ever going to see. So that's, that's where I want to provide leadership and engagement with the people of Orno. That's why, that's why I ran. That's what this is about. And this is why I'm asking to put it in this place.
Just wanted to, can I say something about that, Leo?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just was, I think it's really important that it be visible and something that everyone does know about. And I, I do know that we can have our policies in our internal controls manual online, but I know that we haven't. For three years, people in town have asked for policies to be online and only a few have showed up there in that amount of time. So if we're going that route, it's really important to me that we make a deep and serious commitment as a town that our policies, all of them, and our internal control manual, all of them are online. I realize searchable is a complicated thing to create. And obviously there are some policies that are safety related that can't be there for security and safety reasons. But apart from that, even if they're not searchable, even if it's just a PDF that people can scroll through, I would feel strongly that they need to be there. And I understand Dan's point about therefore feeling like ordinances might make more sense because those are visible by law and easy to find. And I do think that's important as statements that are of what we value and, you know, what we care about as a council, as a town, that things be visible wherever they go.
I'd be willing to withdraw my amendment if we were willing to pass an order today directing the town manager, you know, with your permission, I guess, and consent, Cornell, pass an order today directing the town manager to bring us back a separate ordinance on this that would be in the ordinance. I mean, I'm happy to, but.
You're saying in a different ordinance other than purchasing?
Yeah. I mean, in the give, you know, like I asked, I'd hope to get the town attorney to help me write it, you know? It would have been like, if we just come to a table, like this is what councillor Demerit wants to, you know, his idea is. And then how do we engage in a conversation? What's the best place to do it? And, you know, so it passes the legal muster, you know, it's the best legal avenue and approach to doing this. And then if councillor Demerit's the only council who votes for it, so be it. That was my, that would have been my ideal approach to this from the beginning. And I'm happy to withdraw this amendment and direct the town manager to bring, to work with us for the February meeting for, you know, a hearing and an ordinance on something specific, if that's where people want to go. But I also sense that we could pass this thing tonight if we chose to.
Would that be policy or ordinance? Is, is, is there a difference for that?
There is a difference.
An ordinance.
Yeah, but didn't you just say that the school, at the school, it's a policy?
School is a, is a policy, but, and it's easier to amend as a, as a policy.
And, and I guess, you know, the, I don't know, I don't know. It's called an internal controls manual. That's why I asked about, should it be published? There may be, I don't know in detail why that, it's internal, so that would imply that it's not published. So if that's not the document, maybe it's a policy or maybe it's somewhere else. I'm not sure, but.
I'd like to vote on an ordinance one way or another. I'd like to do it. I've now, we've now at a point where we have something on the table for us to vote on. And I've had the, you know, if it goes down tonight, fine. I'm saying that I'm perfectly willing to withdraw the amendment if we agree to bring, to ask the manager in an order. Is an order the right way to do it? Or just? I'm, I'm happy to, you know.
Does anyone know what our options are?
I don't know your rules, usually just a motion, an approved motion to direct the manager to come back with a.
Right. But we'll need unanimous because it's now after the point where we've done, we could, because we're now past the point in our agenda process where we can add an order to our agenda tonight. We'll need everybody to, I assume we need everybody to agree. And I'm looking at you, Mr. Chair. I'll give you another month, you know, for us to kind of get this as right as we possibly can, or I'd like my vote tonight. So I'm happy to go either way. And, but.
So you're not up to a policy versus an ordinance?
I've got to, I'm going to ask for an ordinance vote either tonight or a month from now. With a public, like a scheduled public hearing on a standalone ordinance with a, with a vote following the public hearing.
Well, I guess, I mean, I would be, I would be in favor of that if, if for nothing else to get it out of finance, to be honest, but.
Okay.
So Dan, is it correct that if we did that, the purposes would be to look at some of the language issues that Cornell just brought up? Am I correct around investigation and also around what's a reasonable time period where it currently says 72 hours? And anything else that's language concern? And also for advice on where else it might go as an ordinance?
As an ordinance.
As a policy. Am I correct on both of those?
I'm open to all. I think that'd be fantastic.
And Cornell, can I say that I appreciate the thought on time and 72 hours not working? But I would appreciate a specific time, not something vague like in a reasonable time. So I would appreciate what is a reasonable time to call a special meeting, an executive session, if that's a week or whatever it is. I'd appreciate an actual time. Thanks.
So perhaps what I should do is offer to withdraw my amendment and then maybe refer to a committee, refer this to a committee for further discussion coming into the February board meeting. Because we have two committee meetings in January. So if, okay. So how do I do that? What would you recommend?
You would make a motion to refer it to committee and it needs a first and a second.
Okay. All right. Is that okay? Leo, does that work for you? And then that'll give Jeff a chance to join us for the discussion as well. So it'd be seven. I like the idea of all seven of us being here when we have that kind of conversation as well. So I offer to withdraw my current amendment and instead refer the amendment to the finance committee at our January 22nd meeting.
Finance, finance operation.
Yeah. And I guess I need a.
So moved.
I would second that.
Thank you.
We need a full vote.
That's it. Moved, seconded. Any other, any further comment?
Okay.
Those in favor? What he just said.
Thank you very much.
We now go back to this motion because you have a first and second on the table. And that would be taken this up as it was presented. This is the actual order which approves the ordinance amendment.
And if, what's a yes mean? What's, what's approved versus?
So if you have your first and second, you call for a vote. If they vote in favor, then the ordinance amendment.
Oh, as amended. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Gotcha. Where are we? All right. We'll go back to 23, 242, order approving an ordinance amendment to the town of Orno. Ordinance is chapter two, article five, finance, division two, purchasing to update the current practice standards as amended. Correct?
No, where we, the amendment's been withdrawn, so without the amendment.
Okay. All right.
So we can forward as originally read lined, how the packet was put together, that would be what's in front of the council.
Okay.
Pretend I was never here.
Oh, if I had that good a memory, Dan. I mean, imagination, sorry. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, Mitch.
All right. Thank you, Dan. You know I kid.
Leo, can I just ask, I'm probably just totally confused, but where is the actual internal controls, policy and procedure being talked about? Is that coming?
People are in the agenda. It's back.
Perfect. Thank you.
Fourth hour tonight.
Stop it.
Now, the, is this right? Consent, the consent agenda. And we're going to vote as a single, is that what we do?
Single motion and you would say orders 2402 through orders 2415.
All right. The consent agenda, the consent agenda is moved and voted on as a single action with no discussion by town councillors or members of the public. A member of the town council, the public can request that an order on the consent agenda be removed and added to new business to allow for explanation and discussion prior to the vote. So for the consent agenda, it'll be orders 2402 through 2415.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
Thank you for order 2413, so we don't have to individually keep changing our meeting times. Whoever wrote that one, thank you.
No further discussion. All those approved. Unanimous.
You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't want to. We'll see you soon. Yeah.
Just missing people.
Where are you going, Pat?
New business. Order 2416, order authorizing the town manager to enter into an agreement with Penobscot County for regional animal control services for one year, beginning January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2024.
So moved?
So moved. Second?
Second.
Someone's going to speak with us?
Yes, Dan Merrill, I'm the chief of police. So Cornell asked me just to bring this forward as there was a wage increase this year for the fiscal year. It's my understanding in speaking to Penobscot County that it's been several years since the animal control officers got a wage increase. So as part of the contract for this year, they're going to move her wage from 1650, which has been in years past, to $17 an hour. Everything else in the contract is the same. We'll still pay mileage. She'll still provide all the same services. It's just a 50 cent increase, which you know, I'll take into consideration. you know, I'll take into consideration when we start going into the budget process moving forward. Um, I don't think it's, I don't see it having a major impact on the budget that we have right now. You know, for the amount of services she provides. So we just wanted to let you guys know.
Thank you, chief. Uh, any further discussion or thoughts?
How often do we use the animal control officer?
It's one of those things where it kind of, it kind of comes and goes like a lot of things with law enforcement. Um, it's been, it's been a little bit more lately because she's been dealing with some issues where we've been having some compliance issues with people. So when we have compliance issues, she has to go to court, that we're getting a lot more billable hours. Um, so as a general rule, I don't have a number for you off the top of my head, the cost per service that we do, but typically what we have budgeted every year is about um, what we spend. And I want to say my budget right now is twenty-five hundred dollars, twenty-five hundred dollars, three thousand dollars a year. Um, so it's not a major impact.
Great. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, order, I'll ask for a vote on twenty, order twenty-four sixteen. Those in favor? Is you unanimous? Order twenty, excuse me, order twenty-four seventeen. Order amending the town of Orno fee schedule for solid waste collections.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I just.
Rob says yay.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, Rob can go too. But I mean, at the same time, really good job, like accommodating people with the, with the switch to the new system, I think, you know, I, you know. I think it's been fat, you're willing to give people a change for free and and all that work that's gone on with it. So I'm very appreciative of that. So thank you.
Yep, the rollout seemed pretty smooth. I still occasionally see the trashcans facing backwards or overflowing, which they won't take. Um. I, when I've seen the ones backwards, I wanted to turn them around, but I thought then I'm enabling, so I should not do that. They need to get official.
I saw someone said cardboard stacked next to their containers. Like, oh, that's not going to work. But yeah. It's very handy having the bin at Public Works, by the way, over the holidays, too.
It was great. Can I ask you, since we're on trash bins, just, I have heard people asking a little bit of questions about like time of day of pickup. It seems like that varies more and sometimes might go all the way into the evening. Is that just normal with the contract? And should people expect that? Or I've just had a few questions. If you're here anyway, can you just answer that?
Think your, I think your mic might not be on.
So, um, yeah, we're working with the contractor on that. We'll settle into a more consistent time. Um, because sometimes if things go smoothly, we're there relatively soon. Um, if they have mechanical failures or issues and they have to do, uh, you know, two truck collection or something like that, it can push things well into the night. Um, in a recent week, they actually reached the capacity of the truck. Um, and so some of the people at the very end of the, um, at the very end of the route didn't get picked up until the next day. Um, but one good thing about the, we have our, if people are signed in with the recollect app, the, the, um, we're able to push out notifications to people that are signed into that. So, um, I'd recommend everybody to sign up for that. Thanks.
Thank you. Think we've officially talked all the trash. We're going to talk this evening. But I'm, uh, um, so order twenty-four seven, have we, maybe we haven't, order twenty-four seventeen. Uh, we'll take a vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. Pass. Order twenty-four eighteen, order authorizing town manager to pay Brighton Industries of Paxton, Massachusetts up to twelve thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars for two turbo drafts for the fire pumper truck with funds drawn from the overlay account seventy-one dash nine one zero dash nine nine eight. The, uh, take a.
So moved.
Second.
And we were going to hear from.
I think it's on.
Mister Sirwa.
Deputy Fire Chief Kevin Sirwa. I am here to discuss the turbo drafts. We've had a couple of meetings on it. Um, I think uh, one more in depth than than the other and here today to look for approval to purchase those two turbo drafts, one for each of the fire engines. Um, and I can take any questions if you have any further questions.
Any further questions or comments?
I really appreciated the engagement with the residents that aren't, aren't served by the water lines. And I wanted to ask, well, the, is there a group or stakeholder that you'll reach back out to once this is approved? Let them know that, yeah, we have the equipment now.
Yeah, those who we have contact with, absolutely. Um, and and we'll make sure that they're notified once those, uh, piece of equipment are in in use and on the truck and been trained with, so.
Great. Thank you for the responsiveness. It's excellent.
Very well.
Any further comments, questions?
No, really, just a second. Really appreciate the creativity and finding a solution for a situation that sounded like it was hard. So thank you to that, for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, we'll take a vote on, what's that number? Uh, order twenty-four eighteen. All those in favor? Unanimous. Pass. Order twenty-four nineteen, order revising the internal control policy and procedures.
I am not sure how I get to be the one that gets to talk about the most exciting things.
Oh, we need a motion, sorry.
I would move approval of this very exciting item. Thanks for bringing it to us today, Mitch. Second.
So, internal controls manual, um, I'm going to give, I know that this has been out there for a while. It's been talked about. There's a lot of information in here. Um, I know a little bit about this, not a ton. I will answer anybody, any questions that I can. And if we need more further information, we can talk that through. It is connected to the purchasing. Um, basically, this is where authority is given um, to folks at what levels they can make purchases and that, that sort of thing. Um, a lot of the, there were a lot of updates in here that, um, were in regard to how we have operated in the past and with having a, a finance, uh, finance director versus the manager being both and those sorts of things. So some wording needed to be changed, uh, along with that. Um, the, the, one of the big things is moving the, um, the purchasing from the thousand to twenty-five hundred um, with, without a purchase order and, you know, and then seventy-five hundred, from five thousand to seventy-five hundred for the manager to bring that, uh, to you folks. I know that has been talked about, uh, quite a bit. But ultimately, there are many things in here that govern how we operate so that we have the controls, so that we have oversight. Um, and that folks are not, um, you know, we, we can be safe that things are happening the right way. Um, so that's really what's in here. I certainly would open it to questions if there are revisions that were missed or things that were confusing. Certainly, we can, uh, adjust that here.
Sarah?
Thank you, Mitch. Thanks for all the work. Um, and I, I was, my questions had to do with the meeting minutes um, that we approved from October thirtieth. Um, had some specific changes that were, um, supposed to be made in this manual. Um, and when I went back and looked, I don't think that they were. So I'm guessing this is an oversight that just didn't happen, so I could flag for you, um, or whoever needs that, Cornell. Um, I'm sorry, again, I just got a chance to look at this this afternoon. I had a family emergency this morning. Um, so on page seven, um, I had asked, I don't know, if I get to that, sorry. I believe I'm on the wrong thing. We are in revision. Nope, I'm on the wrong document. Sorry. It is page seven, but I'm not looking at the correct document to find the correct page seven. So let me scroll. Here we go. Okay. Um, on page seven, there was language that I had asked for some terminology around if needed, that the town manager could duplicate other roles. And I don't see that that was added. Um, so that would be on the red highlighted statement there. I had just asked if this could begin with a statement which said, if needed, the town manager may, with approval, take on these roles. Some language to indicate that it's not the ideal for fiscal controls, but that when necessary, we need to be able to do it.
So you're okay with that there, just, just changing that if needed?
Yeah, the notes are in the meeting minutes from the thirtieth. It says right in here, if needed, to be added to that on page seven. And there was some typo that Sonia flagged on page twelve, and I don't know what that typo was. So I don't know if Sonia remembers enough to check if it was done on page twelve.
I'm afraid I do not remember what typo I found back in October, but I can reread this page and try to find it.
Twelve, that's all I I know in the notes. And then, um, after that, there was some notation about removing an unnecessary section on page twenty-one. And when I looked, page twenty-one appears to still be identical to what it was before to me. Um, I had printed a copy before, so I'm not sure what the unnecessary section was on page twenty-one.
So all those things were talked about during that meeting.
They're in these meeting minutes from this period.
Went back to that meeting, we should be able to.
Hopefully you could listen to that and and figure out what that was. And then I, a couple other things I noted um, that I'm not sure were talked about at that meeting. On page nine, um, sorry, I'm scrolling and I'm not scrolling fast enough to get back to page nine. On page nine, there was originally a yellow highlighted, uh, section there with a notation that something more needed to be added. So let me see. We have a notation back then that said we need to add a more detailed section under new personnel information systems and technology.
Um, and that was, was that around the, um, because we didn't, we, we didn't quite have that information?
Yeah, but I, I think, I, again, maybe it's delineated in the meeting, but when I look, page nine still looks identical to me. So I don't see that section added. And likewise, on page twenty-one, there's another yellow highlighted section, um, previously, which appears to still be identical and, um, I'm not sure why that is either. So if I get to twenty-one, um, originally on twenty-one, the highlighted section was, um, there's a highlighted section saying we need to update this section to reflect secured backup of confidential information, operating systems, et cetera. And I, I'm trying to get to twenty-one, but I think it still says this on this current one that we're supposed to be voting on. It still has under red, red underline, need to update this section to reflect secured backup. So I'm just highlighting those things and wondering if maybe we need to delay this vote until we get that or what we do next.
So the only thing I, I would say about this is this is one that we can take up because it is not an ordinance. We could take up it at, at another time. My question is, because the changes that are specific to the ordinance change, none of those things were, is it possible for us to look at approving it as it sits with a revision of what you've noted? And I could, I can look at that, bring it back to the next committee meeting, to be reevaluated and then move forward.
That makes sense to me is, is we could, uh, sort of approve it with the noted, uh, sort of expected changes. And then if you could just sort of follow up with the revised document, once those changes are implemented, then that, that feels fine to me. How do you feel, Sarah?
I feel great about that for the ones we talked about specifically on October thirtieth, because there's notes. But I don't know what these highlighted yellow sections are. So I feel a little weird about voting for that when we have no idea what those additions would be in the yellow section. Um, maybe no one else does, but I guess I would just like to see what they say.
I think that we're not preemptively voting for those sections, but we could flag those as an additional wave of, um, edits that that are probably recommended. But I think it makes sense to bring this into compliance with our, um, our ordinances tonight.
Absolutely. That makes sense to me. Thanks, Mitch. And sorry again that I couldn't get to it earlier today. Thanks.
So, order twenty-four nineteen, moved, seconded. Do I have to, do we acknowledge that it's? Is it just, if we just approve it with these changes? Is that how we do it?
Should we make an amendment to say with the changes that were in the minutes from October thirtieth? Would that make sense?
Did you just move that?
I would move that.
I would second that amendment.
So we'll vote first on the amendment. All of those in favor? Unanimous. Now we will vote on the order twenty-four nineteen. All of those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Thanks, Mitch. Number eleven, future agenda items, items of concern. Anybody?
I think I'd like to flag that we've, uh, got an upcoming Finance and Operations Committee agenda item that we talked about earlier. So um, now at this moment in the agenda, when it's appropriate to do so, I'll say we should definitely do that soon.
Should we, should we try and schedule that for the twenty-second, Cornell, so that we can have time to notice it in a public notice? Um, to come back into the, if we're going to do a sep, because we'll do a separate ordinance for the February eighth me, a hearing. Shy, I'm shy. I'm looking at you too, right? So we're going to want to do a council committee meeting on the twenty-second on the topic. And then come back in, we'll have to notice a public hearing if we're going to pass an ordinance, if we're going to have an ordinance before us on the ninth.
So just to interject a little there, we are going to be talking.
Twelve. Sorry. Twelve. Yeah, council meetings on the twelfth of February.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I was going to say, we're going to have the SGR potentially person here on the twenty-second or whatever date.
On the twenty-second, or that if they come on the twenty-ninth, whichever day that is, is going to be a very busy meeting. The twenty-second is what we're hoping for still, I think.
Yeah, so we could do it, given that, I thought the council meeting in February was earlier. So given that it's the twelfth and it's a seven day notice for a public hearing. And I'm going to urge that we stack up the hearing and the actual adoption of the ordinance in the same meeting. So have a public hearing and then an ordinance, it's, it's vote on the ordinance at the same, in the same meeting.
That's, that's legit or no?
Well, you can do it, but.
It's not illegal.
It's, it's not.
Practice.
Not taking into account the public's comments, um, if it, it changes, so. You, you really should have.
Okay. So have the public hearing. That's fine.
Dan, can you just, I'm sorry, but I didn't even follow the timeline you laid out. Can you just back up a minute? What is the date we're trying to hit and back me up on why, what we're scheduling around?
I'd like to have a public hearing on the twelfth for, at the town council meeting on the ordinance, giving the council the final word on settlements having to do with harassment or discrimination. I would like to, to facilitate that. I'd like to take advantage of either the twenty-ninth or the twenty-second committee meetings for a finance committee discussion that would happy to like defer to whichever one is not the one with SGR for timing, you know, for logistics. Then we come out of the twenty, say it's the twenty, say if SGR is on the twenty-second, we come out of.
Well, and you're talking, SGR is the twenty-second of January, right?
Right.
And you're talking about the twelfth of February, correct?
Yeah, I'm first talking about the twenty-ninth of January to have a council committee meeting. So we can go over the language that the town attorney and I are going to work on between now and then, I hope. Just because SGR is going to be a big lift, I think.
Is it also, do we, do we not have a meeting on the fifth? And if we, I mean, do we have both the twenty-ninth and the fifth as possibilities, Shelley? Or is that still give us the seven day notice if we decided on the fifth? Or does that not meet our seven day notice requirement? Thank you. That's what I wanted to, so, okay. So it has to either happen on the twenty-second or the twenty-ninth to meet that notice.
Pendant, yeah, we'll flip whichever one doesn't have the SGR. And then we'll do the notice for the twelfth, for the, as I envision it, a public hearing, notice for the twelfth, have the public hearing. Um, and then then vote on it in March, at the March eleventh town council meeting. Which would be after the election, so we'd have new councillors.
Yes.
At least, yep. At least one new councillor. Is that, is that, does this work for everybody? I'm going to timestamp that in my little notes so that. Thank you.
Leo, I have a totally different topic, which is not, I think, something that needs to come up at a future meeting necessarily, but I just wanted to flag. Can we make sure that our DEIB committee meetings are being listed ahead on our website? They seem to not be there even when they're happening the next day sometimes. And I'm not sure how that's falling. I don't know where that is happening from. Does anyone know? You know, Sonia, how we get that fixed? You know, Sonia, how we get that fixed?
I don't know. Yeah, I think probably it would be, I think it may just have been a sort of staff transition issue with knowing that that's a thing, that's a regular meeting that we could put on the calendar and have part of the workflow. And so I guess I could touch base with Cornell about that.
Wasn't aware that we're not doing that, but we will make sure that we do.
It wasn't there when I looked today and it wasn't there a few months ago. So it's happened a few times. The only reason I would bring it up is it's happened a few times. So I'm just hoping we, I wasn't even sure if we had a regular time, but I understand that we do.
We do, it's the second Tuesday at 6:00 PM is the regular time. And Lori Carpenter, who sits on the committee as a member of town staff, has been making the agendas for us. But it would be great to have, I guess, as part of the workflow, making sure that those are posted with sufficient notice. So members of the public are informed of the meeting.
That's great, it just happened because I was trying to look at the SGR scheduling, which made me look at meetings and, and that brought it up. So thank you so very much.
I have another one, sorry. We had Taylor Ash, Ashley and I have gotten a memo into Cornell about the Union Street boat launch. So I'd be interested in having some kind of discussion in the community development committee agenda. So, you know, when it's, when staffs had the time to look at that memo and get back to us on what the right steps are going forward, based on the engagement we've had in the, in the basin neighborhood.
And I think maybe for the community development too, I would like to make sure we get a, like a potluck sort of check in that happens at our next community development meeting briefly, mostly around snow dates. This one went fine, even though we had snow, it wasn't enough snow and 90 people, I think, were there. It went fine, but I want to make sure as a council, we sort of agree if we have a snow date or we don't going forward. Thanks.
Anything else? Or future agenda items, items of concern? Hearing none, we'll go to the town manager's report. Oh, town, this is where, where I'm going to, Jeff was going to talk about this discussion, town manager, right? Sorry.
We're just going to talk about the, the search process. The consultant wants to pin down the, the dates that she can be here. She does, although it says two and a half days in the contract, she's actually here a day and a half, because they factor in a half day travel each way from, from Texas. So tentative, tentatively, she talked about coming in Sunday, the 21st, meeting all day for the 22nd with various groups, staff, council. Can do a public session if you want. And then a half day on Tuesday, and then she would head out on Tuesday afternoon. And so she just wanted to try and pin that down so that she could schedule her, her time.
One question I had about that to counsel is that I think we, I know we're talking about maybe having a committee meeting this week. So my first question is if we're having one, you know, are we punting these discussions to that committee meeting? But if not, on this specific one, I think if, we need to know if council wants to have the full open community meeting. Because if so, that puts us with double booking on Monday night with a full community meeting with Lissa and our council meeting both on the 22nd. And so we might need to think about moving our meeting earlier or, I don't know how we're going to handle that if they're both on that night. So I feel like that needs to happen soon, if not tonight, like by tomorrow, if Lissa can get a book.
My, my thought was to, to talk through, because I don't know, share, Sarah, who you shared. Sarah made a kind of a nice list of other items that we kind of want to think about. But I did want, there was, there's a number of logistical stuff I think that we should address for sure tonight, was what I was thinking. So yeah, I do think we need to answer some of these questions. And that, that being was, you know, the first one, I guess, the timeframe of 122, 123. We're, I guess we're, I won't say acquiescing, but we're going with the 1.5 days. We thought it was two and a half, we, we didn't build in a day of travel to Texas. So that's actually a question, is that, I mean, do we want to push for more there? Or we, can we get done what we need to get done? Thoughts? Is everyone on the same page here?
I, I think, I mean, I don't have a strong feeling. I think we can get a lot done in a day and a half, but it does behoove us to take seriously the process of really planning out how we want that to go and making sure that we're, we're kind of maximizing the use of that time.
And I guess to Sarah's point, least, is it Lissa or Lisa? Lissa? I think she was thinking of coming in Sunday. I think Sarah's sort of thrown out there, maybe to have her come in Monday. Start, that way, that way, we're probably for, logistically, we have Monday and Tuesday. Let me maybe back up. First question is, do we want? She's, I think, I believe she said, we can do a community. And, and I also assume that means we can also do staff. I, I, for me, it's obvious there, you know, and Jeff had provided sort of a list of staff, department heads. It's pretty straightforward who we would probably choose for staff. I think there's probably three groups. She talked about 20 to 30 minute meeting. So I think there's those for sure. And then a community is sort of, is that, does that make sense? Or are we thinking more, there's groups outside of the staff? That should or shouldn't?
I think it would be nice to have a process that kind of had, that really invited people into having an opportunity to meet with Lissa as there's time. And so for example, rather than, if we're going to have a couple members of the Orenno business community, rather than us deciding who that is, put out a call to let people know that this is happening and see who steps up and wants to participate is something. I'd kind of like to have a process that feels more participatory in that way. And similarly, you know, I could think of who, who from town staff might really want to be in the room, but also would want to make sure that all staff felt like they could be included in that process. And so if it takes a little bit longer for us to have a conversation about how to structure that, to me, it's worth it to have a more sort of inclusive process, especially as we're going to be a little bit time limited.
I, I really agree. I think the, the open committee, community meeting is important. You know, we, and I also think that the extent that if there are identified groups that, that we want, that the consultant wants to meet with, I think it should be an inclusive opportunity. And the people choose to come forward and we can, that doesn't preclude us from reaching out and saying, hey, we got this, you know, we got a 15 minute block or whatever it's going to be. We'd love you to take advantage of it. But I, I hate to just not have an invitation open to people. Because we, I think that's the best way to be inclusive.
I think, so for tonight, we agree, it's going to be some small groups in the community. That was, the, the main question was, is, are we going to do a community meeting? Back to timing, having her come. I mean, it seems like that if, if, if she's amenable to it, having her come Monday, be here Monday night and also be here Tuesday, which I, I don't know time wise, what that means when she leaves at this point, at what, one and a half day versus?
Wouldn't it be, logistically, wouldn't it be safer to have her come in Sunday? So all the stuff we schedule with people that is going to happen on a Monday. So she gets here on Sunday and if she comes in late and then on her way out at the, just, I worry about that.
But she couldn't, I mean, a community meeting isn't probably going to happen during the day on a Tuesday. That's the problem with that.
No, could we do it in the evening on Monday? So we move around our, we move our committee meeting on the 22nd to accommodate that? Or maybe make that part of our committee meeting? It's already scheduled.
I think, right, I think there's only two ways we do it. And Leo's talking about one and Dan's talking about the other. And I think, you know, the downside to having her come on Monday and having a council meeting Monday night where we're expecting her to be there is if there are travel delays, she won't be there for that meeting. So I think we can only do that if we feel like if she's not there for our council meeting, we're able to go forward and make those decisions without her. And if we don't think that that's the case, then I think Dan's right. We have to figure out how to do both on a Monday, which would mean that I think we need to move our council meeting earlier so that the community meeting can start by, you know, 6:00 or 6:30, a reasonable time for people to come. And, you know, if we meet from 4:30 to 5:30 and the community meeting is 6:00 to, I don't know, 7:00, 7:30, maybe that works or, you know, I, I think those are our two options, Leo. And I think that's what we need to look at.
I was thinking you were saying maybe move our meeting to Tuesday, but that's not what you're saying. Okay, all right, so it would just be early, gotcha.
Can people move our meeting earlier on Monday? And do we feel like we can keep our council meeting to an hour? What do people feel like about that, the committee's meeting, right?
We've never done it yet, but at the same time, it's always a first time for everything, so.
We have a guess.
I think it's possible that I might be traveling the weekend prior to this Monday. And I'm a little bit cautious to, just in case I have travel delays of my own. I'm curious about the, the, last I had heard, we were looking at the 22nd through 23rd and 29th through 30th. I think I'd have a personal preference for the 29th through 30th, but, but I'm curious where we are with that. Has that already been decided that we're going with that first weekend or?
I don't think it's been decided, that's where we're honing in on, I think.
Yeah.
I feel real strongly about wanting all counselors to be here and, you know, be sure that there's individual or in pairs conversations with counselors that happen with Lissa. So I also wonder, Cornell, would that give us a little more? I don't remember on the contract, are we paying for her flights? Or is that in our contract already? Because they're going to get more expensive if we're within two weeks and less if they're three, right?
I thought it was all inclusive.
I think it is, yeah, to double check that. So we don't pay the fee on that. Okay, I'm fine with the 22nd or the 29th personally.
Same.
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 Same. Be good to know what Jeff's got going on, which we don't know. Let's, let's assume he's good, he's good for a Monday night.
I feel like if the 29th is better for Sonia, then we should look at that date personally then.
We'll assume since we already have a committee meeting scheduled, it would be okay with Jeff, so.
I think I could, I imagine being back in time for a meeting on the 29th, but I would be hesitant to schedule myself anything earlier in the day. So if.
You mean 22nd?
Or excuse me, the 22nd, the 22nd, my, my bad. Yeah, if one on ones from, with council members were supposed to happen during the day on the 22nd, for example, that would be really challenging for me.
Well, let's just go with the 29th, barring any serious objection or scheduling conflict for Jeff.
Yeah, agree.
Great, that would give us a little bit more lead time too, if we want to be doing a really good job, sort of promoting the opportunity to be part of a process here.
Right, right.
Cornell, is there any chance that that date doesn't work for Lissa? Have you asked her about both of those dates at this point or only the 22nd?
I don't remember. I I thought she said she was open, but then she just threw out that date. You know, the 21st, I'd come in. Can't remember if that was just an example of how a day and a half works that she gives you. She comes in on Sunday and leaves Tuesday afternoon or. I thought she was okay with that, but.
Okay, so hopefully maybe the 29th, but if there is an unavoidable conflict for her, then we would return to the 22nd and we would schedule Sonia's meeting hopefully on Tuesday with her morning and not Monday morning. Okay, does that make sense? Ideally, the 29th if she can do it.
Okay, and come in Sunday.
Absolutely.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
She did ask about having a Zoom meeting the week before she arrives to finalize things. Is that something the whole, for the whole council, do you think, or?
I think that was with you and I, Leo, but I could be wrong, Cornell, is that correct?
I thought that was just for.
Okay.
The small group, gotcha.
Cornell, are you the point person for her schedule while she's here? Or who, who's the, I'm just curious how that, who's going to schedule her time while she's here? Is that us or is that you or?
Think that maybe.
Okay.
In, in this next subcommittee group is that, that we'll get, I think we have to get into those details, probably.
Good.
Yeah, I think.
I want to have that low because we need.
Leo and Sarah will work with me and I'll.
Thank you guys.
Organize the small committee groups or whatever.
And this is another, I don't know, this is dire for right now, I guess. But she did ask about parts of the survey that we want to include in the profile. I think we can talk about that in, in subcommittee as well.
Yeah, and I'll give a brief update on that, which is I did ask town staff for access to the preliminary data. And there have been 172, I think, participants when I, at the point in time that I got the data, which was before the weekend. So there are more since then. And I think there will be in my imagination, some kind of language and key words, I think, is going to be most of what comes out of that survey language that, that kind of suggests the kind of leader we're looking for in Orenno. So we got some good data on the question, sort of what of, which ones of these leadership types are folks most interested in seeing? And we could, I guess I could bring that to a subcommittee meeting. I can take a, I can promise to do a little bit of data analysis about what that survey suggests. And then we can talk about it as a council and shake out more from that.
I was going to request that we have access to, but I had no idea what the format of this data is taking or will take or. But my, my only reason with 175, the sooner I could look at that stuff.
I can send you the spreadsheet after the meeting.
Okay, all right, that's cool.
Can you send that to all of us?
Yes, and I can also send you, I was originally sent a PDF that had some graphs that were kind of automatically spit out by the software, so I can send you all of that.
Okay, perfect.
Right, but I don't think there's any, are there any confidentiality issues I should be aware of or?
Posted on the town manager search section.
Well, it doesn't close until the 15th.
Yeah, I don't think we should post it. I don't think we should post it till it closes personally. I feel like at this stage, we go out to council, but I would like to see it first in front of the public, but after it actually closes, in my opinion.
I'll send you all the preliminary results to, that I had before the weekends after this meeting and then it'll close on the 15th, so we'll have final data then.
Also, is there data on which categories of folks, those 172? Like people had to, I mean, they had boxes where they could self identify as either a business owner or a staff member, or I don't know what the other categories were. Do we know what categories we are not getting a lot of responses in? Because I would hope to, maybe we could do some personal outreach as counselors. If the business community hasn't responded or, you know, whatever.
There are responses from all of the categories.
Pretty equally.
I mean, not pretty equally, it's like mostly members of the general public, but also members of the general public outnumber members of owners of local businesses. So it's not wildly disproportionate from what I would expect responses to be. And I can send you all that.
Great, I just meant proportionally, not real numbers, thanks. Leo, I have a question. Is it possible, I know we might still want to talk about some of these, but for me, some of the answers to these has to do with how soon we can get a committee meeting scheduled. Could we maybe talk scheduling and see how far out we're having to book that?
Exactly what I was going to, geez. But I did want to ask Cornell if there's anything else on your list that, that you don't have, that we want to address, that you need us to address? And then, and then I want to schedule when we have our subcommittee.
So, good.
So now we're to our scheduling for a subcommittee.
I looked at the website, which is a little helpful for when there are other meetings we can't meet when somebody else is already meeting in here, right, Leo? Did you look or can we?
I, I did not look, I, I just looked at my schedule.
Do we have a second room or is it Shelley and Cornell really in fact that we need this room to be open in order for us to have a subcommittee meeting? Always, I mean, they're broadcast, right? Because they're open to all of us, so this is the only room we can broadcast from, correct? Okay.
I don't think that they are required by law to be broadcast. They just need to be noticed and you need to take minutes.
Okay.
How much time do they need to be noticed? Is there?
Couple days.
Couple days, because I, personally, I was kind of honing in on Wednesday, looked good for me this week, but probably not going to work.
So I, well, I think it actually could. So from what I looked at, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, it seemed to me that we do have, Wednesdays are generally an open day, except for the planning board, which is the third Wednesdays at 6:30 PM. Is that correct? Yes, so we could do Wednesdays if, say, we met at 5:00. That could be a standing time each week. Wednesdays at from 5:00 to 6:00 is our committee time about the search.
I mean, I, I might be able to work around that. I, I do have regular work at 5 o'clock on Wednesdays. I can't really get out of on, on a consistent basis.
Is, is 4 o'clock an option for people on Wednesdays?
Four would be better for me.
I was thinking like four to six, you may, even if you have to bug out halfway.
If I had to bounce out a little early, I mean, it's, it's better than nothing.
I can do four, how about Matt and Dan, is four possible on Wednesdays?
Most Wednesdays for me, I just, depending on rides every once in a while.
I can give you a ride, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
You want to take my daughter to ballet?
Only if I get to ballet too. All right. Yeah. Wednesdays at four are perfect for me. And it's good that we don't have, we don't have to like hold staff later for stuff too. So.
I love the idea of just having a standing one. And then if there's a week when we don't need it, we can cancel it. But if we can assume that Wednesdays at four is when we're doing the search committee meetings each week, I think that will help our plan. When we don't need one, we can cancel that one.
Probably plan four to six.
Um, sure. It's fine by me.
I think, I mean, sure, if we get out early, it'd be fabulous.
Real efficient, but.
Yeah.
Do we need to, are we gonna need to take minutes? Well, we're gonna, can some, one of us take minutes so we don't have to take staff time? And do we need to broadcast so that we don't have to take, I mean, I'm just raising the question so we don't have to.
I think broadcasting is good, just in terms of people being able to see it. So I'd like to broadcast if we can, but if staff can't.
Is that any issue? Does anyone know about broadcasting Wednesdays four to six? For a few weeks.
Yeah, let's close it. Let's try and shoot it at 5:30 so we don't have to keep anybody past closing.
That sounds good.
Sense?
Four to 5:30.
Does it need to be every meeting or can it be as you, as we need it?
You mean every week?
That you have a, an update that needs to go out.
You mean the broadcasting or the?
Broadcast.
I feel like by default, we should start with we're broadcasting until we get to a point where we feel like, I mean, I, I would feel better about that. That's just me. I'd rather that we do it. And if we then decide it's a lot of nitty gritty, we don't need to, that's one thing. But I was just looking back at our statement about, you know, leadership transition coming into this meeting. And a lot of it was about, on the one about the open citizen engaged search, right? Council will develop and oversee a search for new municipal leadership that will authentically engage Orono citizens and adhere to a very high standard of transparency. So for me, I would like to broadcast. That's me.
Sounds like a mouthful to me, but I agree with, I guess I agree with what we wrote. Since I wrote.
Yeah, I think ideally broadcasting is better. I, I mean, wow. Okay. So it's, um, I mean, it's not for the next three months. I, I don't think, I hope.
I would hope this is gonna be intense for a month and we're done, but I mean with.
SGR here.
Much more.
And by all means, if we can cancel one, we should cancel one.
Okay. So it's not this Wednesday.
Um, I would, can it, it's not this Wednesday?
It's not this Wednesday. Is it this Wednesday?
I would like.
I, I, I feel like we.
That weren't answered.
Should on Wednesday this, this week.
All right. Just, you know, I will not be here. I mean, maybe I can zoom in, but I'm gonna be on the road to South Carolina. So.
Have a great trip, Rob.
Yeah. Would it be better if we did 4:15? I mean, this week, if you've got something, we should accommodate that. So, yeah. Okay. So this week, 4:15 in the future, four. Okay.
People are gonna be voting in here in, uh, the last week of February for in-service absentee. So we want to, you know, obviously we want to be mindful and not, yeah.
You're looking ahead at the Wednesdays coming or?
In the last week of February. So it's, that's, you know, several weeks out. So.
Okay. So that meeting is one we won't be able to hold on a Wednesday?
Right. Or at least here.
Sorry, sorry to spring this on staff, actually. I really wasn't. Candidly, I was more thinking we have a lot of work to get done and I didn't really think about that impact. So I apologize.
Is it possible for one of us to get trained how to turn the Zoom on? Okay.
Thank you for your flexibility.
Very much. Dan, which Wednesdays, we're looking at this Wednesday, which is the?
10th.
10th.
Yeah. It's four o'clock, right?
Uh, we said 4:15 this Wednesday. And then the 17th at four. And then the 24th, is that, we don't have any problems till the end of February, you said?
It would be February 28th that we have in person. And then the following week is, um, going to be the election on the 5th.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure how this room will be on the 6th.
So the 28th and March 5th don't look possible. So we're gonna get reorganized before then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Thanks.
I mean, there, there's opportunity to vote outside of the.
I thought we only voted in November in Orono, but I guess we're.
Okay. So we are shooting for the 29th, right? Um, we're gonna have a, a subcommittee meeting starting on Wednesday. The couple, well, maybe Wednesday's pretty quick. So maybe this isn't, uh, the one thing I did want to, um, bring up from Sarah's emails, uh, was reaching back out to those people that have reached out. At least with a notice that we're, we're working on her or something. And I, and I also want to kind of verify that somebody has that list. Because it was before Cornell and it was random a little bit. So is it okay to discuss who, like openly, who has reached out? Not, not only as a, yeah, maybe it's not, but they have reached out and who we want to make sure get responded to, bless you.
I'm not sure what the protocol is about mentioning whether someone has volunteered to show up. I'm sure if we start talking about who we're gonna choose, that that has to happen in executive session.
Right.
I, maybe Cornell can answer that. As far as tracking, I would love it if anyone received any messages by email, you know, about people who said, I would like to serve on the search committee. I have the ones that came. There was one that came to the whole council and then I asked other counselors if they'd had anything and two people responded. So I added those names. So I personally have a list of only three.
Three.
That I've been told. And I'm not aware, have there been any on the manager's search at orono.org yet? I didn't get any, and I had one community member tell me they tried emailing that and it bounced back to them. I don't know why. So I passed that on to Cornell to try to troubleshoot.
Would you email that today and it did come through, right?
But I tried it and it worked for me. So I'm not sure what that person's worked for you. Yeah.
That's what that was. I didn't even know what that was.
So I currently have a list of three people, one that went to the whole council and two that other people said to me, this person approached and individually emailed or, but if anyone else has them and has time to go back to your emails, send them. I have a list. I'm keeping it. I can share it with Cornell on a Google Doc. Would that be good, Cornell? Or how would you want it? Any other way, what I should do with it? That's good. Google. Okay.
So maybe we can discuss that Wednesday, how we're gonna respond. I mean, a couple of days isn't gonna be that big of a deal at this point, cause it's been a while that, since they've reached out anyway. So. Um, what do we, yeah, I guess, nah. Uh, review and discuss draft profile document completed by staff and Dan. Do we have that document? Do we have the draft document?
I've got a couple of things I need to add to it that I'm remiss on, but, um, so.
That's not, we could.
I can bring it into Wednesday.
Day, do you think?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep.
It's the client information for provision profile brochure, right?
Yeah.
Brochure. Yep.
Which Mitch and.
Profile document. Is that one and the same? I think it is.
Yeah.
Which was mostly done by Mitch and staff tremendously.
Yes.
And there were just a few points that Dan was gonna look at. Did we ever find out?
Mitch and staff.
Leo, did we ever find out who might look at the, um, brief history of Orono section in that? Cause I don't think.
No.
No idea on that yet. So that's a Wednesday discussion too. Okay.
Well, Jeff had mentioned, uh, Jeff had mentioned gleaning something from an annual report.
If you have anything you want to share with us by Wednesday, Mitch, please do on that. And then, you know, we could look at it. Thanks.
And I, I, I think that's probably all for today, would be my thought. Um, I'm glad we're able to get going on Wednesday. Again, apologize for short notice on staff, but I do think we've got to move.
An agenda for Wednesday. Do, do you want us to prepare something or do you want to make a list for us to get out or post or? What would you?
Sarah?
Ah, good question. Um, so everyone on council did get this list of questions that I sent around before. For me, these are the questions I'm aware of that I think we should address. But I don't know if other counselors have other ones. So that might be a question to ask here. Is there any other kind of question people want added to this agenda for Wednesday?
I think this is more than we can probably get through an hour and a half. So.
So we'll start through them and whatever we don't finish, we'll get moved to the next Wednesday was my thought.
That sounds like a plan.
You have this, Cornell, also I shared this with you. So does that work?
So copy paste, make an agenda, send it out.
I guess so. Yeah. Sounds good to me.
We don't have an executive session, right? No. That was there just in case we needed it to discuss names. Correct? That's why it's on the agenda. All right. There are no public petitions. And we'd like to ask for additional public comment if there is any. There's, seeing nobody in the audience, is there anybody online?
No hands raised online, Leo.
All righty. Um, so, okay. No, no, no executive session. Uh, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Jeff in guard, 701.
Nicely done, Leo.